And that made San Pedro boom.
It did, because you had multi-generations working on the boats, owning the boats, starting their own businesses.
Right. Yeah, it became a lifestyle.
That's correct. Let me show you some of these nets. Go ahead.
Oh yeah, so these are the nets they used back in the, what, twenties, thirties?
Well, actually, later, these are synthetic. They're really tough. You can pull on them. It's how we teach the kids about the net being designed.
Right.
Depending on what kind of fish you want it to catch. And this was a big revolution for the fishermen, because prior to that, when the nets were cottoned, they required a lot of work. Mending, you had to make sure they didn't rot in the heat and the water. Here we have synthetic. And a lot of our visitors like to just pull these, get a sense of their strength, and noticing the fact that the larger the fish you're catching, the larger the hole in the net. And if you're catching tiny fish, like a mackerel, a little sardine, you're gonna have a smaller hole.
Right. So this changed the game, basically, 'cause synthetic nets, the nets last longer?
Yes, and made work easier for them.
Right.
You didn't want to invest your money into a good net, and it would repay you.
Right. And how many fishermen would you say were in the, you know, in the twenties or thirties when it first started going? How many fishermen were...
Oh, there were thousands, because not only the San Pedro natives, but people from San Diego and other parts of the country, Washington State, would come down here for the fishing.
Okay, they'd come down, but it's still a process here.
Processed here, but the fishing was done here.
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
Very cool. What else we got here?
Okay.
Oh, these are great old photos here.
These are just an example of the men and women who cleaned the fish by hand and packed it into the cans.
Yeah, can you imagine, by hand, all those fish coming in back then, huh?
That's right. And it talks about the type of work they did. It wasn't easy, they were on their feet a lot of the day. And also, people in town still remember the smell that would be in the air when the cannery workers were getting back from work. And we have a little box here where you can experience some of that smell today.
Oh, yeah.
Why don't you give it a whiff?
Ooh, yeah, that's, that's true.
Yeah, that's pretty good. That is how it would smell, and everyone in town knew that smell, and a lot of people called it perfume, the smell of money.
Yeah.
Meaning that the canneries are very busy, a lot of fish being processed, and that's the smell.
Yeah, so they're excited to smell that every day, knowing that they're busy.
That's right. That's right.
That's great.
All right, let me show you something you might remember. Now, this is a really fun section. Here we have some of our once-local companies, like Chicken in the Sea, and Starkist, and French Sardine, and examples of a lot of the promotional products that they would make. If you worked at the cannery at Christmas time, you could expect to receive maybe a set of glasses, along with some cases of tuna. We have wristwatches, golf balls, you name it. If you were a consumer, you could send away some of the labels from the cans of tuna, and you could get a tuna baker, a salt and pepper shaker, a platter. These things were very common, and today, they're highly collectible, as you can guess.
Yeah, these look pretty cool. I think my mom's had some of these things in her house.
She probably did.
Yeah, so these were the major tuna companies.
That's right. And they did a lot of outreach to the consumer like that. And this little paper hat that says Starkist was actually given to you if you toured the plant.
Oh, wow.
That was your little souvenir hat. And we still have people who remember touring the plant as schoolkids on a field trip to Terminal Island, and they would receive a paper hat.
That's amazing.
Yeah.
And Starkist was one of the anchor...
That's right. That's right.
Who else knew some of the major companies?
Well, we all know Chicken of the Sea.
Right.
They were here for a long time. There was their predecessor, French Sardine. There was Franco-Italian.
Right.
And there were lots of smaller companies, too. They didn't last long, but while they were here, they made an impact as well.
Wow. So how long did the major companies kind of thrive in San Pedro?
Probably right up until the 1960s, and then a lot of them relocated overseas, and the jobs went with them.
Wow. Tell me about the decline and what happened here.
Yeah, that's a great question. What happened to these huge companies like Starkist and Chicken of the Sea? They were such a presence here, and then, all of a sudden, they were gone. And actually, it was a variety of reasons. The companies found it less expensive if they would operate their canneries overseas. And we've seen that with a lot of industries in our country. Also, countries in South America started having territorial wars over where you could fish off their coastline, and we had fishermen who had their boats seized or their nets seized. It became very expensive to them. There's the cyclical nature of fish. Some years were naturally better than others to fish. And of course, foreign competition, and then insurance rates. It was almost like a perfect storm, all these things happening to the Port of L.A.'s fishing industry.
Right, right. So it came down to finances, they can do it cheaper somewhere else, and I guess the government didn't kind of help the industry out much by...
That's correct. You got it.
All the regulations. So I saw this can here. What does that can say?
This artifact really speaks a lot to what happened. It says "U.S. tuna," and it says "contents: nothing through congressional inaction." The market has been captured by foreign flags and been transferred. So that says it all right there, an empty can.
The industry went somewhere else where it's cheaper.
Right.
As it does to a lot of industry. And what is this, a cannery nurse here?
Oh, almost. This is actually the uniform of a cannery worker. We know who wore this. Her name was Minnie Laverini, and she came to San Pedro at age fifteen with her family. She worked at Starkist until she married. But actually, yes, the cannery workers did wear nurses' uniforms. The cannery owners felt that it would imply cleanliness in the operation, sanitation. And in town, you would refer to the female cannery workers as tuna nurses.
Tuna nurses.
So there's the uniform. Let me show you the really fun part of this exhibit. This is all about the fishermen's fiestas.
The fiesta on film.
Think of the Rose Bowl on water, the Rose Bowl Parade, because people would spend hours decorating their boats.
Yeah.
With different tissue, paper, flowers, and totally disguising them to look like something else. Sea creatures, famous parts of history, you name it.
Yeah, they look like big floats.
That's right. And they had a parade, prizes, and a lot of families would bring their friends on board. You can see lots of dancing and eating, and it was really wonderful. And it was meant to bless the fleet for the coming year.
Uh-huh.
And to celebrate all that the industry had offered people.
Right, so these were the good days, and they're flourishing.
That's right.
And every year, they did this?
They did it annually, and of course, now it does not happen.
Right.
But in the heyday, in the fifties and sixties, right after World War II, it was really big. They estimate over 200,000 people lined the docks down by the fish markets at the south end of what is now Port Sacal to watch the parade. So it's a really wonderful time.
Yeah, it's great to see this old footage of these, like, home movies on this.
That's right. And actually, these are home movies that were donated to the museum so that we could all enjoy them.
Oh, that's great.
Look at all the work that went into that.
Yeah, very ornate. That's amazing.
Of course, when the fiesta ended, it was right back to work, right back to sea.
Right. Yeah, that's very nice, Mary Frances. Cool little exhibit here.
Yeah.
Up next, we'll visit the port's graveyard for abandoned ships. Someone once said, "The best days you'll have as a boat owner is the day you buy the boat and the day you sell it." Now, what if no one wants it? Unlike a car, the stressed boat has almost no value. Some owners have resorted to sinking old vessels, not only against the law, but damages the marine environment. If the boat's in a bit of a problem, check out the vessel disposal program.
Hi, I'm Kat. I'm an environmental specialist with the Port of Los Angeles.
So as an environmental specialist, tell me a little bit about the vessel program and what's the benefit?
Well, we have a program that the Port of Los Angeles has initiated. It looks at some of these older vessels that are getting in kind of disrepair. The problem is, is that there's a lot of things that are on a vessel that can harm the environment. And if you think about it, they've got the engine that has gasoline, that has oil. If there's other things, there could be antifreeze, there could be anything that you think of that you have in your car on a daily basis that could get into the water and harm the aquatic organisms that are there.
Right. And over the years, a lot of the owners or industry has just kind of sunned their ships or left it in the harbor?
Yeah, the problem is, a lot of people, they don't have the money to keep it up. Maybe they've kind of forgotten they have the boats. They get into disrepair, and the water is a really cruel environment. It can, you know, take the advantage of something like that. And something happens, a leak gets in there, these old boats, and it's gonna sink. And then that goes into the water.
And that hurts all the marine life in the marinas.
Exactly.
Right. So we see this little old boat, about fifty years old, maybe, getting kind of dismantled and broken up, huh?
Exactly. So we went into that, we cleaned out everything before we got to this point that that could be a problem. We took out the engine, we took out the oil, and now what we're doing is taking it up piece by piece, dismantling it. It won't get used again, it won't harm the environment.
So the recycling action is this, we're breaking it up, we break it down into small pieces, and then it gets, what, taken out to...
We'll have, we'll have it broken up into different pieces. The wood will go into, what we can recycle with, the wood will get recycled. We'll take out any of the metal, that will get recycled, and everything else will get disposed of properly.
So I'm an ocean guy. Tell me why we just can't take these boats and sink them and create an artificial reef or something?
Right. Artificial reefs are actually a really good thing, and that is, works in some cases in a controlled environment as well. What doesn't work here is, what we're trying to prevent, is things actually sinking in the marinas, not out in the open ocean where it would be more of a benefit. And then, another problem is that with a lot of these old wooden boats, it's very hard to get them to sit or to stay down. You have to do a lot of work in order to make that happen. So it's actually a long, lengthy process to get that to happen, and it's kind of expensive. So we would never discourage a boat owner from trying to go down that process if they have the right kind of vessel to do that. They would need to work with the right agencies in order to do that. This program is really to help prevent accidents from happening, from boats from just sinking due to neglect and wear and tear.
Right. So the bottom line is, if you are gonna create an artificial reef or someone wants to, there's a lot of formal steps you have to go through to keep the ocean safe.
Exactly.
And who in the marina is eligible to have their ship kind of dismantled or taken over by the city?
If you own a boat in one of our seventeen marinas at the Port of Los Angeles, you are eligible.
Another little piece that keeps the waters clean and keeps the port clean in Los Angeles.
Exactly.
So all those pieces working together.
Exactly. It's one of the many programs that we have here, and a really important and successful one.
All right, Kat, thanks. And they got rid of this boat pretty quick.
They did.
Went fast, huh?
They did, did a good number on it.
I'm thinking fifty years of old boat, and it's gone like that.
Gone like that.
But in a safe way.
Exactly. That's the important thing.
I hope you enjoyed this edition of Portfolio. I'm James Ramirez, and I'll see you next time.
This is a quorum call for Mr. Alarcon, Mr. Cardness, Miss Hahn, Mr. Corretts, thank you, Mr. Wesson, Mr. Zine, Coria for being here on time. Thank you very much. Mr. Coria, Mr. Wesson, Mr. Zine, and Mr. Smith. It is five after ten in the morning. Those remaining members who are attending, people coming to the chamber right away, that would be Mr. Alarcon, Mr. Cardness, Miss Hahn, Mr. Fizan, Mr. Corretts, Mr. Laban, Mr. Park, Mr. Reyes, and Mr. Rosendahl. Today is Wednesday, February seventeenth, 2010, and we have arranged the ladies, uh, arriving with four more members to form, so we can begin the council meeting. Again, quorum call from Mr. Alarcon, Mr. Cardness, Miss Hahn, Mr. Fizan, Mr. Corretts, Mr. Laban, Park, and Mr. Reyes, and Mr. Rosendahl. We need four more members to form the quorum and begin the meeting. Please come to the chamber. Thank you very much, Mr. Reyes. Three more members to make the quorum and begin the council meeting on Wednesday, February seventeenth, 2010. We are now at eight and need two more members to reach a quorum and begin the council meeting. Mr. Laban is here.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the City Council Meeting for Wednesday, February seventeenth, 2010. We're here in the John F. Rau Council Chambers, room three forty of City Hall. We meet here every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday, though we have been meeting every day during these budget hearing, emergency meetings. We do have a meeting this morning, and we only have nine members here. It is after ten-ten, and we are waiting council members Alarcon, Cardness, Hahn, Wezar, Corretts, and Rosendahl. We have six members who are late. Again, that's council members Alarcon, Cardness, Hahn, Wezar, Corretts, and Rosendahl. Meantime, I want to thank the members of the public who are here today, as well as those who have joined us on Channel Thirty-Five, which broadcasts our meetings live throughout the city's cable system. We also rebroadcast each evening as well on Channel Thirty-Five. We're available two other ways, through the internet at lacity.org, with live streaming webcasts of our council meetings and archived footage of our past council meetings, as well as by your telephone. And you can call 213-621-CITY in order to listen in to our committee meetings and our council meetings. Our agendas are also available online at lacity.org, and all supporting materials that council members receive is available to the public, attached to each council file on the agenda as well. If you'd like to be heard today on any of the items that are before us, please fill out a speaker card, or if you live closer to San Pedro or Van Nuys, you can avail yourself of our facilities at Van Nuys and San Pedro City Hall, and we're able to watch you here in chambers. We also have a section of the meeting for general public comment. That's for items that are not on the agenda, but nevertheless, under the city's jurisdiction. So we have a final quorum call again for these six late council members. Council members Alarcon, Cardness, Hahn, Mr. Rosendahl is here. Again, Alarcon, Cardness, Hahn, Wezar, and Corretts are still late, but we do have a quorum, so Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alarcon, Cardness, Hahn, Wezar, Corretts, Coria, and Laban, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti, ten members present, and a quorum, Mr. President.
First order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
All right. Ms. Perry moves, and Mr. Zine seconds. Without objection, those will be approved. Next order of business?
Communitary resolutions for approval.
Mr. Parks moves, and Mr. Laban seconds. Mr. Wesson, would you like to run through the agenda first? Just, okay. Let's run through the agenda, please.
First, I don't sign the agenda. Our items notice for public hearings, items one through eight are building and safety means. The department has advised that items one, two, and eight can be received and filed, and items three through seven can be, the means can be confirmed on those matters.
Okay, well, without objection, we'll receive and file one, two, and eight. If nobody wishes to call it a special, there are no cards from the public, so let's take up three through seven. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten eyes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Next item is item nine, and that's an item for which public hearing has not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration, and there is a card on that as well.
Okay. We will call that special for cards in the public. Next items, please.
Next items on the continuation agenda. Items ten and eleven are also items for which public hearings have not been held, and ten votes are required consideration on those, and there are cards on those as well.
Okay, we'll call it special from cards, and I'll call the special as well.
And that would take council back to the items call special and public comment.
Okay. I'd like to recognize Councilmember Wesson this time. I know the entire staff of Council District Ten is here with him, and yesterday, we marked the passing of one of our own here in council chambers, and I'd like to turn it over to Councilmember Wesson to say some words about Charmette Bampou.
Thank you, Mr. President, and members, for affording me the opportunity to chat with you right now. I didn't believe that this was gonna be this difficult, but it is. But I will get through it, because Charmette would have wanted me to. Several questions people have been asking my staff and myself, and the staff is behind me, there are two basic questions. People are asking us, "What happened?" And people are asking us, "How are we doing?" We are not doing well. There are sleepless nights, there are nightmares, there's a lot of tears, we are a lot of hugs. I don't know how it is with your offices, but in my office, it's like a family. In the over eleven years that I've been an elected official, no one... At that point in time, it was discovered that she had four brain aneurysms, one of which they were able to coil, I think is the word, or fix 100%. One of them, they were able to control at about eighty to eighty-five percent. One was so small that they felt that it would heal itself, and the other one they couldn't get to because Charmet's heart was starting to weaken. But the doctors felt that they did a very good job, and even indicated that she should, uh, recover fully. It was too much strain on her heart, and on Monday, she had a heart attack. By Tuesday and Wednesday, the, the staff and I were there to try to support her family. And we were there with the family, and we had to try to be strong, so we really never had any time to grieve ourselves because the family was totally distraught. On Friday, mid-afternoon, we began to search for a priest. At about seven, six or seven PM, a priest did come to the hospital, and last rites were administered. She was hooked up to every tube imaginable. Death came for her, and she fought the hell out of it. He came every day, and she fought him back, and she fought him back. She looked tired and drained, but then on Saturday, when we went there first thing in the morning, she looked gorgeous. She looked like herself. The, the color had returned to her skin, and we thought that a, a miracle was going to occur. But, um, and I wish, I truly wish, in fact, I told myself that I was not gonna go back and see her again, because on Saturday, she looked like she was just sleeping. But on Sunday, at 8:00 AM in the morning, or thereabouts, her heart stopped beating for six seconds. It started back on its own, but from there, it was issue after issue after issue. Miss, uh, Lacy and I went into her room as the medical team was feverishly working on her, and, um, I was in there alone when the nurse said, or the doctor said to the rest of the medical staff, I think I should call it. He said, I think, she said, I think I should call it. I immediately left the room at, at that point in time. Miss Lacy came back right after me and was dispatched to, uh, come talk to the family about turning off, uh, the machines, the equipment. Before the family could answer, Charmet lost her battle with death. So, I've just told you how her life ended. I'd like to take a moment, if I can, to tell you how her life began. She was born in the Philippines to a very impoverished family. At the time of her birth, her father was working at a, uh, candy factory, and the name of the candy factory was Charms. And that coupled with, I think, a stocking company, they came up with the name Charmet. Charmet was brilliant even at a young age. She graduated from high school in the Philippines when she just turned sixteen. They have an equivalent to the ROTC over there in high school. Charmet, all four foot ten of her, was given the rank of commander. She was a natural-born leader, little bitty thing. What we found out over the weekend from a cousin is that she remembered going to Charmet's house, and there was a photograph of her as a beauty queen contestant, and we said, what? Because that's not, Charmet's not into that stuff. So, Monday, we were all at Charmet's home, and I was speaking with her mother, and unfortunately, her mother did not make it to the hospital to see her while she was alive. But in a way, I think that's, could prove to be a good thing. But her mother said, the prize of winning the beauty contest was money. And like I said, their family was poor, in fact, poor with four O's, that's just how poor they were. And she sa, I said, well, I didn't even know Charmet was into that. She said she wasn't, but she was into the money. I said, well, she looked beautiful, I could see why she won. She said, no, she rigged it. Charmet paid off judges and won the contest and got all of the money and gave it to her family. That was, uh, that was Charmet. The family moved to Stockton, uh, to an area called Little Manila. Somebody brought them over, loaned them money, and when they got here, they had to pay the money off. So Charmet and their three siblings, Charmet, her brother, and her mother worked in the fields, picking strawberries and sorting cherries. At a very young life, she learned how to work very hard. She used to tell me that at the end of the day, that her fingertips would be stained by the juice of those berries. This is what made Charmet the successful person that you would see flitter around this council chamber. There were six members of the family that lived in a semi-glorified shack. Her mother and father, the father's mother, and her and her brother and her sister. They were so poor that each child had one pair of shoes that was usually a couple of sizes too big so that they could grow into them. They also had, each one had a pair of flip-flops, so as soon as she got home or they got home from school, they would immediately take the shoes off. Michael, can you give me some water? Take the shoes off and put on the, the flippers. That's when Charmet became determined that she would be able to afford as many pairs of shoes as she wanted. And for Sharon in the CLA's office and some of the ladies here, Cece, uh, you know that Charmet had a gazillion. The only woman that I have ever heard of to have more shoes than Charmet was another Filipino woman, and that was Amelda Marcos. At Edison High School, even though she graduated high school, she had to, uh, go to an American, uh, high school. They had physical education, and you had to go swimming every day. Charmet's family could not afford to buy her a bathing suit. So every day, Charmet would wear a T-shirt and a pair of shorts, when all the other kids had bathing suits. Every night, when she came home, her mother would wash the chlorine out of those shorts and place them on the radiator so that they would dry. In the morning, they would be hard, and they would be stiff, but Charmet took them to school. That is when Charmet decided that one day I will be able to buy whatever clothing I wanna buy. And for all of you, when you saw Charmet, she always dressed to the nines. Her jeans were designer jeans. Yesterday, Monday, at the house, Charmet had like nine designer pair of sunglasses. I mean, she was determined to pull herself out of poverty. She got a job at the Burger King, and I don't see, Mr. Caretz is here. When you take, uh, the I-5 headed towards Sacramento, there is a Burger King right, uh, by Stockton. Charmet got a job. The manager, and if I was not on television, I would call him what I really wanna call him, the manager told her that she would never amount to anything, that she should go back to the Philippines, and that her English was terrible, she would never make it here. Well, Charmet got a graduate degree from Columbia University. She was offered a job with the Port Authority in New York, and she accepted the job. Shortly thereafter, she also received an offer from the state of California to come work in a legislative analyst's office. Her mother said Charmet couldn't make up her mind, so she literally flipped a coin, and thank God, California won. She came back here and embarked upon a phenomenal career. She was respected in California. There are laws on the books where they have used Charmet's analysis to base the law, and, and it's ironic that these laws would pertain to gambling, which was her favorite. Desserts and gaming, that was her, her big, uh, thing. She, uh, worked for me, again, this is the first day that I've come into work to look behind my chair, and she not be there. Charmet, when I was elected to the council, I asked her if she wanted to come to Los Angeles, knowing that that would be difficult. Without hesitation, she said yes. She left her friends, she left her family, she left her job, she left her home, and she moved to California. I mean, to Los Angeles. First thing I did, I had a meet with the VAC, and we tried to work out a way to match her salary. I could not do that, but I got it real close. What Charmet decided to do was to take an additional $25,000 pay cut on that. I said, why in the heck would you do that? Is because I wanna distribute it to the other members of the staff that need it more than I do. That was Charmet Bampu. Every member of her family, she paid instead of them at college. She paid every expense, even if it was to go to a school to be a chef. Her mother and father moved back to the Philippines. Every month, Charmet spent, sent, sent them money. That's the type of person that she was. Now, many of you might have noticed that she did not get to the council chambers at 10:00 AM. She was a PM person, not an AM person. So she'd get here about 11:00, but let me tell you, like they used to say in the South, Charmet worked from can to can. She worked probably twelve, thirteen hours every day for eleven years. She inspired the people that you see behind me. There is not one nine-to-five employee on my staff. When we take our kids camping and fishing, we stay, all of us, for three days. They don't get paid for that. They do that because they were trained and they were motivated by a phenomenal four-foot-ten leader that we lovingly refer to as the Met. You cannot replace, you cannot replace a Charmet Bampu. So I don't intend to try. I have to count on the fact that I believe that she prepared, inspired, and motivated the people behind me, my family, and somehow, they will rise to the occasion, and we will get the job done. She really liked all of the members of the council. In fact, no, let me be honest. She liked most of the members of the Los Angeles City Council. Caretz, from our days in the Assembly, used to drive her crazy, because you, I had never met a man that would come up with the weirdest motions that paw, and somehow Charmet would have to be the one that, to shepherd them. So even though she thought you were a little weird, she cared about you a lot. Mr. Cardness, she spent many years with you, and I think, uh, it was your emotions and your passion that she really loved and respected. Richard, she thought you were smart, she thought you were committed, she thought you were articulate, and she loved, she loved, uh, Said, and Tony, she loved, uh, Jose. But Dennis, you were her favorite. Dennis, Zion harassed her for five years, and she looked forward to it. I really don't know how we would have made it through these past couple of days if it weren't for all of you. I wanna thank each and every one of you personally for the phone calls, the texts, the prayers, uh, even if I didn't get a chance to talk to you. Richard, your message was, gave me a lot of strength. Uh, I talked to Mr. Cardness as I just landed, uh, back in Los Angeles, which was at one of the lowest points, and, and Tony, I thank you for being my friend, and I, I mean, people from the federal level have called, from the state level, from the county level, from the city level, and, um, I, I thank you very, very much. And now, as I wrap this up... Mr. Cardness, she spent many years with you, and I think it was your emotions and your passion that she really loved and respected. Richard, she thought you were smart. She thought you were committed. She thought you were articulate. And she loved Said and Tony, she loved Jose. But Dennis, you were her favorite. Dennis Zine harassed her for five years, and she looked forward to it. I really don't know how we would have made it through these past couple of days if it weren't for all of you. I want to thank each and every one of you personally for the phone calls, the texts, the prayers. Even if I didn't get a chance to talk to you, Richard, your message was, gave me a lot of strength. I talked to Mr. Cardness as I just landed back in Los Angeles, which was at one of the lowest points. And Tony, I thank you for being my friend. And I mean, people from the federal level have called, from the state level, from the county level, from the city level, and I thank you very, very much. And now, as I wrap this up, I'm going to try to do my Tom LeBange impersonation. Avak, I need a motion. I can't remember what our policy is on naming buildings or fields or structures or what have you. I want to say I remembered we put in place some kind of way to sift through that. But Avak, I have a feeling that the other members of this council will afford me this accommodation. Charmette Bampura was working very hard with the Rob Dyrdek Foundation, which is a professional skateboard and MTV celebrity. We were able to put together the funds to build, and we will be building, a skateboard plaza at Rancho, Siena Park, in my district. So Avak, I want you to put together a motion, which I would request that Mr. Zine, you second. And I don't know what you have to do, Avak. Get it done. Pretend like I'm Tom LeBange for once and get it done. Again, we don't know how we're going to continue, but we will continue. And we will deliver the services that the people of this city and my district want, need, and expect. But I need, and my city family needs time to grieve. And for us, that time starts now. Thank you, members, and thank you, Mr. President, my wife. Thank you, wife. They're going to set up a memorial fund to help. Charmette's family wants to send her remains back to the Philippines. It's a very expensive proposition. And also, they're, please, you can call my office later, they're formalizing arrangements for some kind of celebration of her life, and we'll have that information by the end of the day. But there is a memorial fund, Charmette Bampura Memorial Fund. And those of you that are in Los Angeles that would like to contribute, the checks should be made out to the Charmette Bampura Memorial Fund, and they should be sent to Trudy Abraham in my City Hall office. Anyone in the Sacramento area, it's the same fund. And those checks should be sent to her dear friend Kathy Matsumoto. This information will be available with my staff if you have any questions and concerns. I'm sure I forgot to say something. All I want to say is that this was the biggest shock to all of us. I have not felt such pain since I lost my father when I was 22 years old. Charmette, we love you, and we will not let you down. We will continue to be a family. We will continue to deliver services for the constituents, and we will continue to be the coolest office in City Hall.
Thank you very much, Mr. Weston, and thank you for your strength. And it goes without saying that the entire family of the City Council is here not only to help in direct ways, but in any indirect ways that we can with staffing and making sure that your staff has that time and place to grieve as well. So you just let us know.
Could you take care of the adjourning motion?
Absolutely. We will make sure that we adjourn.
Because we have 15 members, and I would hope that on this day you could operate with 14?
Yes, absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Weston. If we can now go to our general public comment. We have a few cards that are here. Diane Hamilton is our first speaker, and Dr. Clyde Williams will follow. Thank you, everybody, for your understanding this morning and for your patience. Ms. Hamilton, good morning.
Good morning. My name is Diane Hamilton. I am a city employee at 200 North Spring Street. We are supposed to be sharing this quote-unquote shared sacrifice, yet none of you on the council have taken any cuts or furloughs aside from Councilmember Zine. I ask, where is the shared sacrifice in that? You all are the ones who spent this money, yet we as employees have to pay it back. Where is the fairness in that? We weren't there when you spent all this money. When Mayor Tom Bradley was in office, he didn't have any of these problems. He left an example for all of you to follow, and you threw it by the wayside. Is this just shared greed or just plain, simple negligence? The people of the city did not elect you to be frivolous in spending money. They elected you to make things better and be wise decision-makers. We as employees should not be laid off nor pick up a tab that the mayor and the council have spent. This is not good leadership. The solution, close the city every other Friday and use city council discretionary funds to close your deficit. Use your power and take away funds from DWP, Harvard Airport, et cetera. Even though DWP doesn't acknowledge being part of the city, well, they are. These entities make their revenue through city residents on behalf of the City of Los Angeles using city seal on all their letterheads and documents. Being a former employee of DWP, we all have the same job classifications, but not the same pay. That's salary discrimination. If we're not going to be sharing, if we're going to be sharing in this sacrifice, then let's share salaries and furloughs across the board. Without residents of the City of Los Angeles, these entities would cease. Also, let's not forget your pay cuts and furloughs as well in our future decisions. Let this be a lesson to all of you, never to repeat this irresponsible spending again. Thank you.
Thank you. Just one brief thing, Ms. Hamilton. We have had cuts not only directly to ourselves, but to our offices that have totaled now more than 25% over the last two and a half years. Furloughs are being taken by council staff. I think it would be unfair. My staff certainly wouldn't forgive me if I didn't let you know that. Appreciate all your other points, but we just wanted to establish that for the record. I think Mr. Cardness and Ms. Perry wanted to say something on that as well. Mr. Cardness?
Yes, thank you. I appreciate your testimony, but at the same time, out of respect for my staff and my family, I am taking furloughs and my staff are taking furloughs, and we are taking other measures. I have actually let go some staff that I'm very close to, and I pray for them every day that they're doing well. But I have actually laid off some of my staff as well. So we understand what you're saying. Perhaps your comments are directed to somebody else, but out of respect for my staff and their families, they're taking the hit too. Thank you.
Ms. Perry?
Thank you. Mr. Chair, Mr. President, and I also feel the need to correct the public record, and I appreciate the lady making her comments, but they are factually inaccurate. And I'm not just speaking for my office, but for a number of offices, council offices that have already taken a 25% cut, plus putting their staffs on furlough. I think that needs to be put out there in the public domain so that people do understand that we are sharing sacrifice, and we have done so without fanfare because it was the right thing to do.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Dr. Williams is our next speaker. After that is Arnold Sachs.
Dr. Clyde Williams, 4115 Barrett Road, Northeast LA. El Soriano. Okay. Stormwater. It's split between the Department of Public Works and the Department of Water and Power. Why? I don't know. They don't appear to know, but maybe it's due to money. The Sierra Club is going to be requesting the Controller to do an audit, a review of the entire stormwater situation. Why is it being done in two different departments? Why is it a mess? We have Propo. We don't know where it's going. We don't know how to pay for its maintenance, which is estimated at $50 million. We have a lot of other monies that may be coming from the LID ordinance, and we have a lot of activities going on. So we've asked that the Controller review the entire stormwater situation. Okay. Yesterday, IT resources were considered for the City of Los Angeles. Frankly, they are a mess. The ITA does not appear to have any power to really organize the IT systems within the City of Los Angeles. There are 40 different systems going on. LAPD, LA Fire Department, Port of LA, LAWA, DWP, all have their own messes. So how can ITA organize 40 or more different messes? Can they put it out to public-private partnership? No, because public-private partnerships require that the private sector understand what are the resources, what are the liabilities, and what are the risks in undertaking, putting this together. So I would highly recommend that you either give ITA the power and the money to organize the IT for the City of Los Angeles, or maybe give it over to DWP, because they have a big one.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. Arnold Sachs, our next speaker. After that is Nadir Shah. After Mr. Sachs, sorry. Mr. Sachs, and then you, Mr. Shah. If you can sit down, Mr. Shah. Here's Mr. Sachs first, and then you, if you don't mind. You're on deck. Go ahead, Mr. Sachs.
Thank you. Good morning. Today's LA Times. Brown tackles early release law. His spokesperson says, "We want all counties to understand, to know that how we interpret the law is why we're involved in this." How we interpret the law. The reason I bring this up is because yesterday there was a clarification in the record regarding some statements I made and the fact about open hearings for county policy, for city policy. And I said that you should have the same open hearings that you held when you had the billboard dispute here with AEG. With, the head of AEG came to council chambers, and at that hearing, Attorney Clark mentioned, or prior to that hearing, when I mentioned the name of Fred Wucher. Prior to that hearing, City Council had a hearing in Van Nuys to discuss the payment of Fred Wucher's fees for representing the Controller's office in closed session and in open session, and it was undecided. That's where his name first came up. So when AEG was here, and in this story, it states that Jan Perry, who said Chutana threatened her with potential prosecution in the case regarding permitting, said she had hired her own attorney to represent her and would refuse to go into any closed session meeting on the issue. That's one story. Counsel allows LA Live billboards. Jan Perry had to hire her own attorney. Now, the reason I mention Fred Wucher is because, A, the closeness with, you had the hearings here in Van Nuys regarding him, and the fact that she did hire.
Thank you, Mr. Sachs.
That's a different problem.
Thank you. Nadir Shah is our next speaker. After that is Terry Keating. Yeah, Ms. Perry?
Just a quick second. Again, Mr. Sachs has a fertile imagination, and I need to correct the record one more time. I'll continue to do that as long as he continues to make, speak untruths. Not sure why he's doing it or what his motivation is, but that is untrue for the record.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. Nadir Shah, you're up, and he'll be followed by Terry Keating.
Respected Mr. President and respected council members, my name is Nadir Shah, and I am a civil engineering associate at Department of Public Works Bureau of Engineering. We do design of major interceptor sewers, special sewers, beeper network, third-party coordination. Our services ensures that city infrastructure is designed, built, rehabilitated, and maintained in the most cost-effective way. Now, if the city council chooses to lay off or cut any of the engineering positions, it is going to seriously undermine the city infrastructure, and as a consequence, it would result, pose a public safety hazard and public health hazard. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Shah. We appreciate your testimony. Mr. Keating, and then Nat Isaac will follow. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, members of the council. I'm Terry Keating. I work for you. I'm a civil engineering associate at the Port of Los Angeles. Thanks. I'm here to thank you for your commitment to your city workforce. I'm here to thank you for identifying and maintaining the separation between municipal services and commercial enterprise. I come to you out of the Ramona Gardens housing project. Those of us who make it out of the projects don't have direction. We don't have high aspirations. My first job was as custodian. I was counseled, I was mentored, I went to school seemingly forever, and as I said, I'm now a civil engineering associate for you. Thank you for your faith in me. I'm not unique. There are many of us who followed a similar path. Right now, you are under a lot of pressure to lay us off, to replace us with contractors at the level where I started, consultants at the level where I am now. Those of us in the community who've been through this and those who know us realize that your employment system is far and away the most effective intervention in the lives of young people who have a choice to make. Before you disavow and begin dismantling this system by laying us off, please be absolutely certain this is the direction you are to take to this city in, and it's going to provide an actual benefit to this community. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Keating. Nat Isaac, and then Ben Fortson.
Good morning, City Council. Good morning, public. My name's Nat Isaac. I'm a City of LA employee for the Bureau of Sanitation as an environmental engineer, engineering associate. I've been working for the city for the past 20 years, and I'm project manager for the Dead Animal Collection Program for the city. I'm also a resident of the City of Los Angeles and Councilman Herb Weston's district. My condolences to him and his staff on their loss. It sounds like Charmette was one of the unsung heroes of our district. I didn't even know her, but I'm sure I benefit from her timeless work. As we other city employees, a lot of them go unsung. Last week, I spoke on the issues of proposed layoffs and how that although they don't directly impact us, because we're specially funded, they do impact our operations by affecting other city employees who we rely on. 3-1-1 employees, mechanics, systems analysts, all who we require to do our job. Today, I want to speak about the furloughs that were imposed upon specially funded employees. Since July 09, 16 hours a month have been taken away from myself and other employees that are specially funded in trying to do our jobs, where we're impacted by these furloughs. It doesn't help the general fund, as was mentioned by Councilman Coretts last Thursday. It hurts the operations and getting grant money and just doing our job, basically. And it hurts employees with the lack of salary. It's difficult to afford things in this difficult economy. Last week, there was a motion made by Councilman Coretts and seconded by Alarcon, Councilman Alarcon, to stop the furloughs for specially funded employees. I don't know what happened to it. It seemed to have gone into special session, and that's the last I heard of it. So maybe you can address that. I'd appreciate it. Our only recourse right now as specially funded employees is to use the grievance process, which is something we don't really want to do, and it's unnecessary if it could be resolved here. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Ben Fortson is our last speaker in public comment. Good morning, Mr. Fortson.
My name is Ben Fortson, and I'm here to speak out against the, this award has been declared and waged against black people, especially black males, for over the past 20 years. And this began in the jail system. Black children have, and especially black males have been, and presently, the victims of physical murders, physical attacks and murders committed by Hispanic, Latino, and Mexican gangs, which are racially motivated. These racist attacks are taught to the youth by their elders. A, common occurrences of riots in our children's schools, periodic murders of our children in our communities, bullying and verbal insults and attacks like the N-word, violence committed against any black person for gang initi- committed against any black person for gang initiations. This is a fully understood and documented by the governing authorities, lawmakers, and law enforcement officers. However, these racist attacks are not being addressed and pursued as hate crimes. In fact, they are being downplayed and treated as if they are minor occurrences. It's evident that hate crime protective laws do not apply to black people. Yes, tormenting black people is a fundamental part of America's culture, and one might even say it's woven into the very fibers of the flag. This is a common known fact, there is no doubt, that it's open season on black people, especially black males. It appears that black people are on the bottom of the food chain and at the very top of the menu. Hip-Hop Talks dot com.
Thank you, sir. That will end our general public comment. If we can take up item nine, we have two comment cards, or a few comment cards, excuse me. Our first speaker for item number nine is Dr. Clyde Williams.
Dr. Clyde Williams, El Sereno, Northeast LA. Platinum pensions, golden parachutes for early retirements, and maybe all of the senior staff that are taking their early retirement will come back as consultants as part of the public-private partnerships. We don't know. We don't know a lot of things that go on in the, quote, bargaining instructions and negotiations between the employees, the employee organizations, and whoever represents the city. All we're quite concerned about is the transparency of this, because the structural deficits which are accruing at the present time and will be obligations for the next twenty years for the city of Los Angeles and us, owner occupants, have a problem. Where's the money going to come from? We don't know. If the stock market continues to go down or fluctuates, who will have to pay? We don't know. We don't know what's going on, and transparency needs to be emphasized. The full obligation of the city is to provide that transparency and to inform the taxpayers as to what's going on behind the closed doors. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. Arnold Sacks, our next speaker. After that is Jacob Miller.
Good morning, Arnold Sacks. This item refers to addressing the fiscal year 2009, 2010, and 2010, 2011 budget deficits. So please, again, for the public's benefit, reiterate what happened last February that stopped you from addressing the 2009, 2010 budget deficit. Maybe you weren't aware of it last February. The mayor knew. The public knew. The city council probably didn't know. Exactly what's gone on in the last couple of days that could not have occurred last year? Why the time waste of time? Another department had, a bunch of department workers came in to say that their jobs are so important. But if you had acted in February of last year, you might have been able to save them. Now you should be looking at 2010, 2011. What programs are you putting in place that will directly affect that $400 million deficit? Or do we wait till next February when even more departments come in? Maybe you could sell space for the departments to come in and talk about how important the jobs that were saved this year that'll be lost next year because your failed to act. The mayor has said he wants layoffs, more layoffs. Three years in a row, we've heard layoffs, layoffs, layoffs. One person's been laid off in three years, according to the downtown news. We need a program. You know, it's pretty amazing. When we quote newspaper stories that give these information out, nobody says the story is wrong. But we, as quoters, people that read this information, we're the ones that wrong. Why don't you talk and write a letter to the editor, Councilman Smith, and say, "Your information is invalid," and stop giving out the false information to the public? Because when the public reads it, they get a wrong impression of the city council.
Thank you, Mr. Sacks. Jacob Miller is our next speaker. After that is Rafael Garcia. Good morning, good.
Good morning. Special thank you out to all of you for accepting my card, and some of you did, did make some, some open arms out to me, and I wanted to thank you for that. I also just wanted to talk to you today about humane education, what my department, the Department of Animal Services provides. The canvassers who go out and collect license fees, that's just a perk. That money that comes in from the canvassers, that's just a perk. It's the fact that each one of those canvassers visits fifty homes. That's fifty homes that come into the shelters, start asking us the questions, start learning how to better take care of their pets, so they need to rely off of us less. I think it's very important that we keep this program going. I think that it's very important that you take a very stern look at our department and notice how top-heavy it is. A lot of these, a lot of these cuts can be made from the top. It could save, it could save money for the department so we can operate more efficiently. Right now, our, our rank-and-file staff are overwhelmed with the animals coming through the doors, being dropped off. Our officers are overwhelmed with calls, so much so that they, that they rarely have a chance to handle anything except emergency calls. And the problem is only going to get worse as staff gets cut and other services that provide humane education to Los Angeles are cut as well. These are just as important as gang interventions, because everybody knows that it all starts in, a lot of the, a lot of the problems with, with this world start with animal abuse. People, people who go on to, to commit terrible crimes start off by committing terrible crimes to animals. And I think it's very important that people understand this. I think it's very important that people, that people have a way of communicating with our department that's easy to talk to, that's easily accessible. It's not just some website or some telephone number where you hear an automated message, but a person that comes to your door, answers the questions, and tells you where you can go for some honest help. I want to thank you very much, and please, keep working with the coalition, keep working with the unions. There is a solution out there, and layoffs are not part of the equation, despite what the mayor thinks. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. And just as a point of information, the union suggested DWP, Doggy Database motions moving forward today. So thank you for that as well. Rafael Garcia is our next speaker.
Buen dia, consejares honorables. Councilman Perry?
Councilman Parks?
Councilman Rosendahl?
Councilman Smith?
Pro-term mayor, is that correct?
The council president. The council member is fine, don't worry.
Garcia.
Señor Alarcon, Councilman.
Councilman, Councilman Coretts?
Good day.
And Councilman LeBarge?
Buen dia.
El nombre mío es Rafael Garcia, estoy con el Departamento de Servicios General.
Two hundred and twenty-five years ago, two and one-quarter centuries, history will not remember the failures of this generation. History will only remember the architects and engineers who resolved the dilemma this great city is presently in. A military axiom is, "Mission first, soldiers always." We, the workers, are the worker bees of this busy and complex hive. We produce the honey. We wish to express our gratitude for all of the effort all of you are making to resolve all of our problems. We wish to thank you, and we pray for your success. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Appreciate your comments today. There's no action necessary on item nine, so we will go to item ten, and we have a card on that. Mr. Sacks, if you'd like to come forward on item number ten.
Good afternoon, Arnold Sacks. And what steps will the city council, this is regarding Lasers Employee Retirement System, what steps will the city council take to maintain the adequate return of Lasers investment so that the public won't be on the bill, won't have to foot the bill for the differential?
That's not what's before us. It's actually just on, it's an ordinance very specifically on the retirement, the period for waiting for retirement from Lasers, but we're not discussing Lasers investment the way it's agendized. You could do that in normal public comment, but not here.
Specific, specific, specific.
Thank you very much.
Let's just do this. Contributions, contributions, contributions. When will the city council address contributions?
Okay, thank you, sir. We do have, we did last week, and we have another thing scheduled, I believe, next week, on Tuesday, on pensions in a more general sense. Today, this is the ordinance that's before us. If we can ask the city attorney to come forward on this, please.
Mr. Echeverria is on his way.
Okay. Colleagues, just if I may, as a point of information from the chair, this is the ordinance prepared. We had the draft ordinance yesterday for, at the city clerk's office. We agendized it today, and we can walk through, perhaps, perhaps any personnel could walk us through what the ordinance will do in terms of the, or do you want Lasers, is Lasers better prepared to do that? Oh, we have Lasers come forward.
Good morning, Tom Addus, Assistant General Manager with Lasers. What this ordinance would do, right now, the way the administrative code reads, it requires that a Lasers member who wants to file for retirement has to file at least thirty days in advance of his or her retirement date. This ordinance would waive that thirty-day requirement and allow an active Lasers member to retire immediately if he or she receives a layoff notice or in times where the resolution of fiscal emergency has been adopted by council.
Colleagues, I know we discussed this yesterday. Are there any further questions about the impact? I know this is something that both our labor partners and many members of the council have asked for. If not, let's go ahead and put it in motion, because it'll be a thirty-day wait for this as an ordinance that has to be posted. So with that, let's go ahead and please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay, that passes on the first reading?
Actually, Mr. Rosendahl goes for thirty days.
I'll go to the second reading for thirty days, your second meeting, excuse me. That was made clear by Mr. Echeverria yesterday. My apologies. Thank you. We'll be back in thirty days to finalize that. And thank you for your swift work on that, the city attorney. Item number eleven, please.
And that was called special for cards.
I'm sorry, Mr. City Attorney, did you want to add something? Mr. Echeverria, we got it done, but thank you for your appearance, ladies and gentlemen, Pete Echeverria. Dr. Clyde Williams is our first speaker on item eleven, and then Arnold Sacks.
Dr. Clyde Williams, El Sereno, Northeast LA. As pointed out before, there seems to be a lot of opportunities to switch, let's take the entire stormwater program and put it over into the Department of Water and Power, which also has a stormwater program, and also recycling. Oh, recycling. Isn't that part of the sewage treatment facilities? So why not put the entire sewage treatment facilities into the DWP? Because they're getting paid for it anyway through the billing process. Yesterday, it was also pointed out that the publishing, General Services Publishing, well, they might as well be in DWP because their primary client is DWP. Get them off the general fund elements and put them over to DWP. Seems like they have a lot of net surplus revenue that they contribute, so they can also take a lot more people. In the background, once they get them organized, why not do a public-private partnership for the entire power sector of the DWP? That would give you a lot more money, especially for the deficits that are coming in 2012 to 2013, and 2013 to 2014, and beyond. Remember, we have a pension plan to pay for. Thank you.
Echoing the doctors, one good idea that came out of yesterday's meeting was from Freeman, where he said, "Tear up the contracts." Although he was talking about contracts between the DWP and outside businesses, why not tear up the contracts with the unions? The great communicator, Ronald Reagan, showed the way when he destroyed the air traffic controllers who went on strike, and he fired them all. No big deal. So it sets a precedent. The DWP got a pay raise in October, sharing the pain of the city family. Some pain. It's amazing. And again, what about combining, like the county's doing? What about combining the police with the General Services Police? Increasing the role, number of police officers, and putting people into jobs that civilians can't be hired for, but they increase the budget by hiring only police to do civilian work, which maintains a higher budget, more expenses, higher pension, and soon, the only people that'll be able to be hired will be police and firefighters for emergency personnel because they're exempt from the hiring freeze, and they're the most expensive personnel that you can hire, other than DWP, which is in itself a proprietary department. And we do want to thank the proprietary departments for showing up yesterday with their input. Lot of information gathered. Was the city spending $1.5 million a day? How much does that add to the debt? To find out, we got less than a hundred people that could be transferred? And what was the number last February when the budget deficit was, was started?
Thank you, Mr. Sacks. Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and thank you, colleagues. This is the main item before us today in terms of our budget work, besides obviously the ordinance, which we just moved forward to its second reading, which I thank you for as well. Just by way of frame, if I can spend two minutes of kind of reframing and doing the daily catch-up of where we are on our budget deliberations, and then narrow in a little bit more here on getting the reports that this council has asked for and is working very hard on. We know that we have the unprecedented problem before us of a further decline of about $185 million of revenue that was on top of the $400 million we were short earlier this year. Very proud of this council working earlier this year, of working together with our union partners, our city employees, and closing three-quarters of that deficit together through shared sacrifice by eliminating positions, but those were not layoffs. Obviously, that is our continuing hope, that the elimination of positions can downsize government to the right size. We've grown by nearly 4,000 positions in, in the last fifteen years or so, but we need to be sure that we can do that in the most collaborative and cooperative way possible. We also have before us an unemployment rate, which we know in Los Angeles, well above the national average at 13.2%. And while revenue declined by about $75 million last fall, we were able to very quickly do that, and today, we face additional $78 million in salary and benefit concessions that have been given to us by the unions to be able to retire people early. We now have a four-month, $685 million problem. It isn't just this year and then next year. It's simultaneous, that we have to close about $200 million from this year and $485 from the next fiscal year, but be prepared to have a real budget from the mayor that this council then adds any additions to and passes in time for that to be real savings. We have already moved forward on the elimination of up to 1,000 different positions, consolidations, and even elimination of some departments. Very painful things to do, but ones that are necessary. We've transferred all available funds. We're working on doing even more to the reserve, and it was, it'll be next week when we finish the very, very laborious work of scrubbing each of those funds, consulting with council members to see what projects are and are not moving, and making sure that we can take those balances, not just as borrows but as gives, to boost our emergency reserve fund. And then we're also looking at trying to meet and exceed our projected savings goals. That's one of the pieces we're going to be looking at today, by making sure that we meet our savings goals, and also look at the overtime and transfers that were a part of what the coalition and others have pointed out may, that'd be millions of dollars that are still on the table. And also move towards some sort of a, kind of spending moratorium, which is very critical, I think, for all of us here as well. Leasing of our assets, a really targeted number on our debt collection, our cost recovery on our ambulance services, and potentially a cash fee option for EMT, which is voluntary for EMT service, that would also boost some additional monies. Today, though, we're looking at, and I'd like to ask personnel, Maggie, to come forward, some of the transfers, and we asked for a very precise report, not just what our goals were, but I want to thank Personnel Department that's been working really hard to make sure that people can fit into different pieces. We have a very complicated puzzle, folks, and one shape does not necessarily fit into a different hole, depending on what we have with transfers and the elimination of positions. We have set goals for that. Yesterday, we heard from the proprietary general managers as to how many positions they have that are open, that where people could-- they have that are open, where people could transfer to those specially funded departments, but also what they see in the coming year. And now, today, we have the opportunity to look at some of those e-retirements and positions that are not necessarily eliminated, who's moving over into those, how those are being staffed, and what sort of savings we can expect to generate from that. So with that, I'd just like to turn it over to Maggie, and she can give us a report. And I, you know, would ask you all to ask the questions. You need to continue as committee chairs, specifically in the areas that you oversee, where those transfers are happening, how we can get more people in those positions. Every transfer we make is a job that isn't going to be lost in a layoff, and that's good not only for the employees of Los Angeles, but for the services that these employees provide, all Angelenos, and that's really what we are most focused on, and making sure that continues. So with that, turn it over to Maggie.
Thank you, Councilmember Garcetti. Let me just give you a brief overview of what we've been doing for the last week. On February 3rd, the Personnel Department was directed to begin moving general fund employees to special fund and proprietary departments. While the intent was to reduce the need for layoff, the targeted classifications were based on the vacancies that existed. If the classification was listed on the layoff list, and there was a corresponding classification in a proprietary department or that was special funded, and it was vacant, the occupants of the position in the department where layoff in that class was slated were contacted regarding the transfer opportunity. If there were a number of positions that were being offered, and there were not enough people within the vulnerable departments, we contacted all of the members in that class throughout the city. On February 4th, the Personnel Department worked with the proprietary departments and departments with special funds to identify both vacant positions as well as potentially targeted classes for layoff. On February 5th, we identified 4,775 employees for available positions. The contact was through email, and if the members of that class had no city email address, notification was accomplished through the department personnel officers by contacting the people directly. Between February 5th and February 8th, we received and processed more than 2,000 transfer applications, which were then forwarded to the applicable departments. We continued to receive applications after the deadline. From February 12th through the 16th, we received and processed 160 transfers to special fund and proprietary departments. On February 16th, the Personnel Department followed up with departments who have employees in classes that were notified of transfer opportunities where no applications were received by the special funded departments to determine if notification was made. On February 16th, we notified 1,252 additional employees who are not in positions targeted for layoff, excuse me, but who were in a corresponding class that was vacant as well as special funded.
And on that, if I can just ask you, the logic there is that somebody who's not necessarily targeted for layoff might nevertheless want to switch position, and that position that they then open up may attract somebody who is targeted for layoff? Is that the...
No, actually, the goal was to reduce the expenditure on the general fund.
Okay, so that would be held vacant, that position?
Right, so even if that position was not slated for layoff, that individual would move to a special funded position, creating a savings in the general fund.
But that requires, I assume, the general managers to keep that position vacant?
Yes.
Okay.
Beginning February 10th, we have been working very closely with Lasers to process special funded e-RIP employees to ensure the maximum placement opportunities. As of now, we are continuing to review remaining special fund positions that could be filled with other civil service classifications. I'm available for questions?
Thank you, colleagues. Those were the numbers. I mean, just in summary again, we had 2,000 applications, 160 have been transferred, and, you know, obviously, blowing down that number and trying to see will really require a combination of active management by our general managers, oversight by committee chairs who oversee those departments, and also work for the mayor's office, obviously, who are working from the executive branch side of things. So we come here in these meetings to look at overall legislative solutions. We aren't tasked under the charter with being the managers, but we certainly can help find savings and hold general managers accountable when that isn't happening. So we encourage you to talk to Personnel, see with the departments that you oversee in your committees, which ones are doing well, which ones aren't, and what we can do to get more people moving forward. But again, Personnel Department's here to answer any of your questions on this, since this was of high concern to the council members, I know.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. First, Mr. Labange.
Yeah.
Are there any websites that you could go to see this very simple foot-page document where everything is? That we, during that we asked yesterday of our proprietary departments, yeah?
This document is not on the website. We could put it on the website. Currently, what we have available is a listing of all the positions, the classes, that are available for transfer.
All right, and let me ask Ms. Wayland, when you get an authorization to hire somebody, that means you have money set aside to pay that person, right? What is that? When you're over on Temple Street, someone gives you an authorization to hire 25 police officers, or whatever the case may be, a class of 100, is there any document that comes that says we have money to pay for these individuals?
Well, considering the fact that we have a pretty elaborate approval system as it relates to filling jobs, most departments are subject to the managed hiring process, which consists of the CIO and the CLA and the mayor's office, so until the Personnel Department receives approval from that committee, we do not certify the eligible list so that they can...
Tell us about managed hiring. How's that work?
I think I would defer to the CIO and managed hiring.
Sure. Thank you.
Councilmember, when a department wants to...
And for the record...
Patty Huber with the CIO.
Thanks, Patty.
Sorry. When a department wants to fill a position, they submit a request to the managed hiring committee, their representatives from our office, the mayor's office, and the CLA. They review the request and approve it, and one of the things that they do, approve or deny it based on their evaluation of it, one of the things they do look at is whether or not there's sufficient funding in the department, if they're looking at a special fund position, they want to make sure there's 100 percent...
Do they do it by signature, like five signatures on it, or...
It's three, one representative from each office. I don't sit on it, so I don't know if they actually sign it, but they do say whether it's approved or not.
Are we prepared to hire lifeguards for the pools of our recreation centers this summer? Are we prepared to hire camp counselors? Is that's going to be a critical thing for those who don't expect it? We're all talking about these city hall issues. There's services that the city does provide that's going to be a shock if we're not there. Do you know that?
I don't know off the top of my head. I would have to find out if that request has come in.
We could find out, let the council know. There's a process going on. And Ms. Wayland, you're from Recreation and Parks, you're great service, longest tenure general manager, and what, because Record Parks has that process too. Does their Personnel Department work outside yours, or how does that work for parks and pools?
They have to go through the same process as the rest of the city departments. They go through the managed hiring process.
Right.
And in addition to that, those departments that don't have to go through the managed hiring process, on a weekly basis, we notify the mayor's office of vacancies that exist within the proprietary departments, and they inform us as to whether or not those positions should be filled, because the goal has always been to try to move as many current city employees into the special funded jobs as we could. So we have a number of checks and balances that we have to consider before we allow departments to fill positions.
And last question, how many city employees do we have estimated right now, and how many, how many part-time city employees are there?
I can tell you, the last we checked, we had about 52,000 full-time city employees.
Does that include Water and Power?
Yes.
Okay.
That's the entire...
Entire, very good.
Right, and I'm not sure...
52,000 for 4 million people. Right.
Right.
Okay, and then a part-time, you're not sure?
No, I'm not. I would hazard a guess, maybe 7,000.
Okay, but you'll let us know.
Yes.
I think that'd be good to watch, everybody. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Mr. Carton, that's...
Thank you, Maggie. What's the breakdown between the, to the nearest thousand, the number of employees that are on the general fund versus the number of employees full-time that are not on general fund, but they're full-time, doing some service within and for the city of Los Angeles and our constituents, but they're not general fund staff?
Well, you know, the number is very fluid, but I'm...
To the nearest thousand?
Okay, 14, about 14,000 positions are in the proprietary departments, and about 34,000 are in the general funded departments. Some of these...
That means there's about 4,000 that are not within the proprietaries, but they're general funded, excuse me, they're not general fund, they're being paid with special funds, perhaps federal grants, et cetera. So that leaves about 4,000 that are being paid for by grants wherever they're at, however, they're not proprietary, not working for the proprietary departments necessarily, but they're servicing the city somehow.
I would hope that...
Because you said 34, 14, that's 48. You mentioned 52 full-time employees, so that's about 4,000.
Yeah, you know what, I would like to beg off on that somewhat and verify that that's absolutely accurate.
Yeah, if you could give back to us with the, with the more accurate figures.
One of the problems that we've had is that accounting for special funds has been somewhat difficult, because unfortunately, the city does not have a position control system that shows the entire number of positions and the funding source for every one of those positions, which is one of the reasons this has been such an ordeal, because much of it has to be done by hand.
Okay, and in order for you to have a system that's much more automated and dedicated to that, we as policymakers need to fortify you with the resources and the people in order to do it more formally rather than by hand.
That's right.
Okay, so that's a policy decision, colleagues, that I guess the city hasn't come up with. However, of those 52,000 employees, if they're full-time employees, we provide retirement access and medical benefits for them and their family, right?
That's correct.
So when somebody is funded with special funds, if they're proprietary departments or they're paid with grants and not general fund, what fund pays for their retirement and their medical benefits?
I'll answer that for you. Councilmember, in general, the general fund picks up the cost to begin with, but we do, when we do the budget, we look for the special fund's capability to reimburse the general fund for those costs. So if you take the Sewer Construction and Maintenance Fund, for example, we will calculate the salaries for that, and then we will budget for the fund to reimburse the general fund as a receipt. To the extent that positions aren't filled, then that revenue will be adjusted, but we do have special funds where they don't have the capacity to provide full reimbursement, and then the general fund will subsidize those related costs.
See, I think that's where one of the problem lies. I think that some of the council members are under the impression that if we move people from the general fund, their salaries, and then we move them to a special fund or a grant-funded position, that, oh my gosh, we leave the general fund from the obligation of that burden of pay or expenditure of funds, but that's not necessarily the case.
It's going to vary.
It's going to vary, but unfortunately, I know you're real busy, and I know we haven't given you all the bodies you need to do all the exorbitant amount of work with the e-RIP and things of that nature, but what I'm going to ask of you is that we start breaking down how many of those bodies currently are special funded and working within the city, but the general fund is picking up the cost of the medical benefits and the retirement? Okay? Because I think it's important for us policymakers to understand that and not get too excited when we see somebody, we've saved their job, they're going to be able to continue to feed their family, yet at the same time, we're not being honest with ourselves, thinking that we've released the burden on the general fund when in fact we haven't. My last question, Mr. President, is what's the basic to the nearest 10%? If we pay somebody $100,000, for example, in salary, approximately how many thousands of dollars do we pay in retirement and benefits?
I think we would estimate that between 45 and 50, but I would have to get back to you with a...
Between 45 and 50%. So if somebody's getting paid $50,000 in salary annually, we're basically paying about $20,000 or possibly a little bit more than $20,000 in additional taxpayer dollars going toward that individual's retirement and health benefits, correct?
Yes, correct.
Thank you, I'll push my button again. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Carton, that's Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. President. Maggie, can you just explain to us in the sense that all of the things that's been in the paper about layoffs and departments getting direction on laying people off, where are you in that system, and how does that compete with the issues of people transferring, people moving into other departments, and things of that nature? So you have a list that I'm assuming is a moving target, but where are you in this whole mix of trying to make this work?
Well, Personnel Department has had about 44 people dedicated to the process of layoffs. With the placement function, we have added more people to handle that. It is a moving target. It has been extraordinarily difficult to place people and at the very same time, attempt to determine what positions are being eliminated and what's going to result in a layoff. So we are doing our level best, however, the list of 1,000 that we have, we don't believe that list to be a stable list, because a number of the people that are on that list will be transferring to special funded positions. So in a sense, we have to wait until the dust settles. We've been doing a lot of that same kind of waiting.
Okay, so as of February 17th, have you received any notice from a general manager as to a layoff?
No, we have not.
All right, and so the other issue, when you talk about special funds, I think most of us think about special funds that they come in as a routine resource. Do those special funds that you relate to also include positions that are funded by grants as well as funds that are generated within the city?
Yes, they do.
Now, wouldn't grants be viewed differently, being that they're on a, many times, a year-to-year funding basis, or maybe some of them may go as much as three years, but generally, it's a year-to-year with no real guarantee that they will be with us the following year? So how do we correlate that issue of putting people into grant-funded positions as though they are long-term jobs?
Well, that's a good point, and one of the things that, because we don't have a guarantee that a grant-funded position is going to be a permanent position within our system, one of the things that we've been very careful to do is on the transfer election form, we do have an admonition that informs employees that while they may be transferring to a special funded job, there's no guarantee that they will be exempt from a layoff.
Okay, so the issue is that next year, if that grant doesn't come through or it's downsized, they could be back on some lists in order to balance the general, because they can't come back to the general fund?
That's correct.
My final question, let me just ask, the one thing also seems to be confusing, there's an effort to eliminate positions, or if people are in that position, remove people on the sense of layoffs, but what's not clear is how many of those vacancies are going to get eliminated because of e-RIP? How many of those vacancies will disappear? Because there's a belief that those vacancies are just waiting for people to be, to fill them, but yet, if I understand, e-RIP, most, or all of those positions will not be filled. And so how do we separate those that are legitimate job opportunities from those that will disappear off of the layoff list or the e-RIP list, to know exactly what we're dealing with?
I wish I knew the answer to that, and I have very serious concerns because the general fund is being depleted.
Yes.
And many of the core services that are being performed by the general fund will not be performed, and consequently, I don't know what the outcome is going to be, and I'm being perfectly honest with you, I have very serious concerns about how the city is going to be able to deliver services.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Parks. Mr. Rosedoll.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to start off where Mr. Parks stopped. You have serious concerns... You have serious concerns, we all have serious concerns. We have, what, twenty-four hundred people in the E-RIP process?
We have twenty-four hundred, yes.
And how many have left?
I think the remainder of the proprietaries, I think that's about eight hundred, but I think that they have managed to get, is Tom still here? No, I'm sorry.
I've got some information here, I have to add it up.
I mean, the bottom line is, we want E-RIP to move yesterday, not tomorrow, but yesterday, and we want to know exactly how many people have E-RIPPed and how many are still to be E-RIPPed, number one. Number two, from day one, when we talked about this early retirement plan, I always said, how are we going to OJT, we used to use that phrase, on the job training, for particular functions that are critical to the city? I mean, either the people between age fifty and sixty-four, basically, they are running the city. I'm not running it, I'm a policymaker, I do the best I can to exert my influence, but I don't run this place, it's run by those folks that are being E-RIPPed. What have we done so that their particular tasks that are critical to the mission of providing services to our constituent are handled? You said you're uncomfortable, I'm uncomfortable. Give me some sense of what process we're going through to go forward with city business.
Well, councilmember, I would hope that the individual departments that are experiencing senior people leaving, that they are, you know, as best they can, trying to address those job duties that they're performing and fill in the gaps wherever they will. However, I think the last time that I appeared before this body, I indicated, because the E-RIP was not targeted, because the E-RIP was offered to anyone who qualified for it, it put the departments in a position that it was very difficult to plan for this.
I understand, but I'd like an update in black and white that I can look at and understand where we are on the number of people who've E-RIPPed and what particular functions and how they're being dealt with, some kind of a grid that gives us some sensibilities here?
Well, and I would be happy to do that, however, my staff, as time permits, has attempted to meet with city departments to identify where the gaps are going to be and how we as, from an HR perspective, can address them. I would be happy to put together a survey to the departments to ask them to complete it so that we could turn it over to you and you could see where the gaps are and...
Sure, that would be helpful, because my hope is this, that anybody who's E-RIPPing, besides the parties and combined, how great you are, which they are, have they transferred those functions to somebody else who understands what to do about it? We need some comfort, that we're going to know where the light switches are and where the keys are and those kinds of things.
Well, just one additional thing, if you take the issue not only of E-RIP, but of the transfers, and we ask these people to make job offers in one week, these people are off the payroll of those departments. And so consequently, the planning part of it has really, there's not been an opportunity to plan how these gaps are going to be filled.
Sure, sure, that's obviously the frustration. The last question I have is approximately a hundred and sixty have moved into some kind of a special position, and we got about a hundred and sixty-five that are pending, meaning that the opening is there, but people haven't gone to it?
Well, yesterday it was a hundred and sixty, but in the afternoon, we had about forty-five more job offers that had been made, those transfers are pending. We still have a number of jobs that really we don't think we can fill through transfer, but we have some other jobs that we think that we can do something creative in an effort to move people into those positions. So we have been on a very, very short timeframe, but I think we have moved a mountain, if not mountains, over the last week.
We certainly appreciate what you've done, it's been awesome under the circumstances here. Last question, when the mayor talks about a thousand people, we talk about a thousand, we talk about a strategy, and then we possibly hear more people in the next fiscal year. Of that thousand block, how many have gotten a pink slip at this point?
No one, there have been no layoffs.
Is there anticipated pink slips or not?
Yes, but I think that, you know, the list of a thousand, given the transfers, will change. So consequently, I think general managers are waiting to see what's going to happen and then they will have to redo their list.
I see, so maybe from the thousand, we're down to six fifty or seven hundred, and then from that six fifty, seven hundred, there might be those issues?
Well, you know, I think that we also have to consider the fact that there have been other numbers that have been thrown out there, and we really need to consider the entire book of business, not just bits and pieces.
Sure, no, we look forward to that kind of report back, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, thank you very much. Mr. Wiesar.
Thank you. Can I ask the City Attorney's Office to come up, please? And I know there's some discussion at the last meeting about some of the City Attorney's Office's efforts to reduce staff, and I just would ask if you could provide us an update as to where we are with the staff reductions there, please? Thank you. Yes, good morning, Council President, councilmembers, Councilman Wiesar. Yes, when I was last here, I was discussing the efforts that the City Attorney's Office has been making to provide transfers, E-RIP, and other special funding sources for the one hundred employees that have been identified in our office. We have been successful in finding special funding for all one hundred, if not more, of those targeted in the FSR. The important document to look at is Attachment Twelve to the FSR. The one hundred people that were targeted in our office were based on a number of seven hundred and fifty. The CAO wanted our office to have seven hundred and fifty general funded positions by June thirtieth of two thousand and ten. We will not only beat seven fifty, we will be at about seven thirty-five by June thirtieth of two thousand and ten. We were able to accomplish that as the mayor and the CAO requested by, through E-RIP, through finding special funding such as grants and other opportunities, as well as transfers to the proprietaries. We've been working on that for many months, we've accomplished our seven hundred and fifty goal and actually have beat it. I do have graphs, I have names, I have positions, I have numbers, I will provide that to the council. We've been able to do that because we've been working for many months in doing that. I read with great interest yesterday, when the mayor indicated that the City Attorney's Office was targeted for a hundred and the controller was targeted for five layoffs. I also read with great interest when the mayor indicated that the controller was able to meet her five layoffs because she agreed to those five layoffs. What I understand is the controller is doing exactly what we are doing, they are not physically laying anybody off. Actually, what they are doing is what we are doing, transferring people to special funds, proprietaries, or E-RIPS. So we are doing exactly what we've been asked to do and we will hit that target, not on June thirtieth, we will hit the seven hundred and fifty target by the end of March, we will be way ahead of our goal. Thank you very much, Mr. Carter, and if you could provide to this council any of that documentation, because one of my contentions through this whole process is, when I first got the list in Budget and Finance, one of my questions to the general managers were, did you know about this, did you discuss it with CAO, and most of them didn't, as is the case with your office as well. And recognizing that there was an effort by the CAO's office to move quickly on this, they mentioned they didn't have time to speak, but we're doing that now, and it shows that given some short time, we don't have all the time in the world, your office was able to do that, and as we move forward and make some decisions for the City Attorney's Office, it'd be helpful to have that information to show that you've made those savings and even more than the CAO was asking you, so thank you for that, and I look forward to receiving that information. Thank you. I want to thank the proprietaries and others that have worked very closely with our office in order to accomplish that goal, appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Wiesar, Ms. Hahn.
Thank you. One of the, again, you've been doing an excellent job, we really, really appreciate you. We have really put on an extreme amount of burden on you and your staff to try to do everything we can to try to absorb some of these folks into special funded or proprietary departments. And you've told us you're okay with your staff right now, but what you're hoping for is maybe that we could process some of your early retirements last.
Yes, thank you.
You know, and to that end, I'm actually introducing a motion today that does that. I mean, it's, we're in CAS twenty-two, obviously, those are positions that are general funded, but they're also positions, I think at this point, that actually the benefit of keeping them to relieve the general fund of other positions outweighs, I think, you know, letting them retire early, so we're going to introduce that today. Let me ask about a couple of positions out, if you know, that are, do we have a good grasp of how many positions are actually reimbursed by the harbor and the airport in the city of L.A.? I feel like there's several positions that are funded through, or reimbursed, they may be on the general fund, but they're reimbursed by the harbor.
Before we talk about the positions, I would like to say that the Employee Benefits Trust Fund, which is reimbursed for health insurance, the proprietaries, Lawa and the port are very good about reimbursing us, maybe not as timely as we would like, but they consistently reimburse us for that.
Are there full positions, though, that are reimbursed?
Yes, there are, I'm going to tell you, I don't have that number with me, but we do have positions in a number of departments that are reimbursed by the proprietary departments for services.
And is that, are we factoring in that in this whole process? Are they targeted, are some, are any of those targeted for layoffs? And is that because of bumping rights, or is that just because no one really looked at where they were funded?
When we developed our list of a thousand, we were avoiding positions that were reimbursed, so we would not have targeted positions that were reimbursed by proprietaries for elimination because they're reimbursed. And they're providing a specific service that is reimbursable.
Right.
However, would any of those positions be impacted in the event of a layoff? We would not be able to know that at this point. Somebody could be laid off in another department and bounce back to a department and then start doing that proprietary work, but I couldn't tell you.
Okay, do we know the curators of the museums, the lighthouse, the Banning Museum, and the Drum Barracks, are any of those reimbursed by the harbor department?
I know the harbor department does reimburse for positions in Wreckin' Parks, but I don't know specifically which ones.
Okay. One of the things, you know, I think they should be, because the lighthouse and the Banning Museum, for instance, are certainly port-related, but they may not be on port property, so that might be an issue, although I don't know.
And I don't know the list off the top of my head, I do know that we received reimbursement from the harbor for some Wreckin' Park activities.
Yeah, I know that they are targeted for layoffs, and I've obviously gotten a number of calls of people who are very concerned about that. This might be an opportunity that I'm going to maybe push forward, maybe a land swap at this point, particularly for the lighthouse, might make sense, and have that, it's now on city property, maybe it makes sense now to swap that for port property. I've got some ideas, City Attorney, on what might make sense, but this might be an idea to look at things like that so that, you know, we can get some of this more, these costs of these entities absorbed by harbor revenues. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn, Mr. Rades.
Thank you, Council President, I also want to say thank you so much, I know how hard you've been working, I can imagine how difficult it's been.
Thank you.
When you raised the point about not having that directive from us to focus on the targeted, on the E-RIP transition process, you mentioned something about a survey, that maybe there's a survey we can generate for the managers. Would it be possible to, within that survey, I'm not sure how to phrase it, but to identify those positions in their respective departments that deal with revenue generation? I mean, there's the immediate act, there's the act of collecting, that's one function, but there's also the function that speaks to how we move forward in revenue generating scenarios, development, economic development, planning. There are some functions that have that focus or that end result. Is that something we can ask in your survey so that we understand the cost of this transition and how you start dealing with responding in a positive manner and addressing that cost, because the functions are being either preserved, magnified, highlight however you want to phrase that? But in all this movement, we have to start creating some kind of a laser beam, attention to those positions that are making the city slow down in its ability to create revenue or generate revenue or collect revenue. Is that something we could do in the survey?
Wait, you know, it just dawned on me that we did do a survey of each department, did we, did we include special fund? But we could build on that, I mean, that's not a difficult thing to do, we can work with the CAO's office and see about identifying those positions that are providing support to proprietary departments. So that's something that I think that we could do relatively quickly.
And, councilmember, I would also add that when departments submitted their budget proposal, they were directed by the mayor's office to account for the E-RIP positions and were afforded the opportunity that if they were losing a position via E-RIP that was critical, that they could swap it for something else, because, you know, the goal is, is that we basically have to reduce by the twenty-four hundred with limitations on how many we can backfill every year as we move forward, but we understood that we may have to make some adjustments to, based on where the holes were.
What struck me when we had the City Controller's representative here, I asked him, when you look at the revenue reports, is there a way to tell where, with those departments, that revenue, how does it get realized? He said, no, we just get a bottom-line figure, and it shows this department generated X amount of revenue, but there's no way of breaking it down, so maybe with your effort and building on what you just said in the survey, maybe we could get to that place, because I imagine when the chairperson of every committee starts addressing this issue, that the managers have the ability to begin to analyze it within that context of understanding where the revenue is coming from. So I appreciate all your hard work and hopefully build up on that infrastructure that allows us to make wise decisions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carnes, for second plane. Carnes?
Thank you. One of the things that I want to hopefully clarify, and I'm hoping that we can appropriately and honestly move as many good working people with the city of Los Angeles from general fund positions over to other funded positions, but I want to make sure that we're honest with ourselves as policymakers as to what is really going on. So I did some numbers, for example, if we were to move a thousand bodies, a thousand workers, and those workers had an average income of, say, an even fifty thousand dollars, and even if we're only compensating about forty percent of their salaries on top of that toward health benefits, retirement benefits, et cetera, that comes out to fifty million dollars in salaries and twenty million dollars in benefits that the city pays. If we're unable to move the benefits portion over with them, we potentially could be looking at saving fifty million dollars in general fund salaries, but we can't exactly get too happy about it, because if we don't move over the benefit obligation as well, then we actually have to subtract that twenty million dollars in savings to the general fund, and really, all we're saving is thirty million dollars from the general fund by moving a thousand workers from the general fund obligation over to special funds or proprietary departments, et cetera. So what I wanted to make sure that we understand is that we can't kid ourselves into thinking that we're sprinting, because really what we're doing is we're taking two steps forward and one step backwards whenever that happens, so it's really not a sprint, it really is taking two steps forward and one step backwards. However, we do have a responsibility as policymakers, we've identified just over two-hundred million dollars that we have to save in our budget between now and June thirtieth, and we're going to do it in various ways, but one of the ways in which we've been talking about it on this floor quite often is by moving people off of payroll, the general fund payroll, so we can start scoring that as a savings to the general fund as soon as possible. However, how many people have been taken off the general fund payroll so far since the council started directing the various departments and your department on trying to move people from general fund payroll to special funds or proprietaries, to the nearest fifty bodies, fifty people?
I would bet if we include the one sixty, probably about four hundred, between four hundred and four hundred and fifty.
Okay, and between now and June thirtieth, what, at what pace... And between now and June 30th, what, at what pace could we hope, okay, a hopeful pace, a realistic pace, that we can move off the payroll between now and June 30th? To the nearest 25 people?
I don't even, never.
Again, I'm asking for a hopeful pace. I'm not asking for a pace that I'm going to hold you to, but if things go very, very well, everybody shows up to work every day, works, you know, as hard as they can, and paperwork moves quickly?
As you know, it depends largely on the number of special funded vacancies that are available. They would be, I think, largely available as a result of E-RIP, although there may be regular retirements as well. Based on the projections for E-RIP, there would probably be, for the rest of the year, starting in March, a couple of hundred special funded positions a month. Depending on what those job classes that people are retiring from, I think we could effectuate a couple of hundred transfers a month. We just did almost that in one week, but I would hate to continue that pace. But many of them are going to be 10, 14 transfers, so you're trying to find from one class to another class, and do they have the skill set, that sort of thing? Do they need training? It'll get more complicated as we go on.
No, but also we have to be mindful, colleagues, that, for example, if we move somebody off the rolls on May, the 1st of June, basically, they're moved off the general fund payroll for the last 30 days of the fiscal year. But when somebody moves off the payroll on, say, March 1st, that, therefore, there's a bigger savings from the general fund that the month of March, they're off the payroll, the month of April, May, and June, so that's four months. So, even if we moved at a pace of 200 per month, we're not going to be looking at 600, 700, 800 people off the payroll, general fund payroll, for the next four months. We're really looking at a couple hundred off the payroll in the last 30 days, 400 off the payroll for the last two months, et cetera. So, the bottom line is, we have to be honest with ourselves on how much we're going to be able to score as savings and that we're going to have to double back and try to find other savings in other places. Because just for the human element of the time it takes to move workers from one place to another, we can't do it overnight. So, we really can't pretend or kid ourselves into thinking that we're going to have massive savings by moving these people in this year's budget. Thank you.
Did you have to respond? No. Mr. Parks, second time.
Thank you, Mr. President. One of the things, and I think following up on the questions I had earlier, the dilemma that we have is that it seems like we're going to have to have a drop dead date on all the searches for positions and transfers and loans to where, when do we start saying where the layoffs start? Because if we have any expectation of a savings this year, I understand some of the savings will come from the transfers, but on the other hand, if none of that savings as far as layoffs starts this year, then the issue for this year's budget, where do we start getting the benefits from that? And that's what's confusing, is though we're incrementally walking down a path to say, "Look for these jobs," which is commendable, but it's pretty clear we're not going to reach all 1,500 or 1,000 by doing that. So, the key is, how do we get these other folks off the payroll?
Well, fortunately, we know who has filed for E-RIP, so that's something that we can count on.
Yes. The 20, they said that the March, everybody that's on E-RIP and general fund positions should be gone?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. So, and then we know the positions, and we know the individuals who have filed for E-RIP, who are in the proprietary departments. So, we have a pretty good gauge on the number of vacancies that's going to create. What we don't know is whether or not all of those positions will be available. And I think that's something that we have to rely on the proprietaries to let us know.
I think when they were here yesterday, and they gave us figures of what they've done, and they gave us figures for what they project for 12 months, and it appeared, if my math is correct, that 300 to 400 positions for 12 months seems to be their max. I mean, at least, and they're going to come back next week. But again, it's to help, but the issue is what happens to the other positions that are still lingering on the general fund. And then if we transfer people into their E-RIP vacancies, then the savings is null and void. They can't hire backfill, but if they're transferred into E-RIP vacancies that are created, then that savings doesn't get generated. So, it seems like we're going backwards in the sense of creating, we're doing a lot of processing and energy to get people into these positions, but we, I think universally would say, it's not enough positions to accommodate the savings we need, yet we're, the other part of that system isn't in full bloom.
Well, I think that you have described the dilemma that we deal with, but I do think that if you move the people, if you move the general fund people into the positions that were vacated through E-RIP and you don't backfill the general fund position...
That's right.
Then the general fund...
Benefits. But again, to what degree? Because at one time, we're talking 1,000 to 1,500 off of the general fund in order to at least scrape through this year.
And the layoffs will occur in the general fund.
But if the layoffs are next fiscal year, then the only benefit for this year are what you find in the transfers, which we've all agreed is not going to be enough positions to accommodate those on the waiting list.
But if the layoff were to occur this year, based on the work that my staff has already done, there, I believe that we're estimating that we could remove at least 500 people from the payroll as a result of layoff.
Between now and June 30th?
Yes.
I mean...
Yeah.
Okay. So, again, when we get some of these firmer numbers as to the transfers, the E-RIPs, the replacements, the movement, so that you have a finite number to say, "I have to lay off or process the 500 or 300 or 200," whatever that number eventually comes about? Because what I think where we're headed is like we were a year ago, where we said, "We've got to lay all these people off," and then everybody massages them and said, "Oops, there is no layoffs," and the budget keeps growing. And so, that's what I'm trying to figure, when do we get to that point of knowing definitively what those numbers are going to be?
I hope so. You know, I wish, I wish I knew, but the world is moving very, very fast right now.
What you're saying, the machinery's in place to process once you've made aware of it. And again, but again, it appears we had a point of no return because if you could do 500 in four months, can you do 500 in three months? Can you do 500 in two months? These are the kinds of issues and decision because we're into mid-February and we're almost through the fiscal year. And again, the next budget is coming up, but again, what we don't resolve, and the worst part of it is if March, we end up with another shortfall in capital, it starts this whole cycle all over again.
Well, I will say that based on our estimates, we can lay off about 500 people who have displacement within that period of time, by June 30th.
By June 30th.
If we were to talk about employees who have no displacement, we could accomplish a layoff within a couple of weeks.
Okay, so, but again, is there, when you say 500 or over, is there a timeline that says, "I must get started with a three monthly time," or can it be done in one month? Can it be done in, does it require four months? What is that timeline that we're pushing you up against?
I don't know, honestly. You know, the thing is, is that if the layoffs list were completely stable, with the information that we had, then I think that I could give you a more accurate assessment. But given the fact that we expect that the list will change because of the transfers...
But if you had a stable list today, what is the time process to process 500 people?
For the, how many people are we targeting?
You said for five, you said that you're capable of doing 500. If you had a stable list and they said, "Here's 500," what's the timeline it would take you to get that done?
I think we could get it done by June 30th.
So, it would take you almost a full four months?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. And these are some questions that still need to be refined and discussed in the future. Mr. Garcetti to close?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. And colleagues, you see the importance of this staying here and us getting these very specific reports. For folks that are out there, we've said it before, but obviously, we have things that are specially funded, that's areas that are funded from sources of revenue other than the general fund and protected somewhat from this financial situation that we're in in the downturn of the economy, that folks can move to as those people retire. They can move into those real jobs that real people were doing to do real work before in order to generate savings because those people move out of the general fund. Now, those services may be lost out of the general fund, but we're seeing how difficult that process can be, but how crucial and how critical it is. So, we really do want personnel, let us know, you know, what additional resources as this crazy world is moving around. We are sometimes finding ourselves, you know, we had this conversation with city attorney, we've had this with the personnel, we've had it with other places where you need capacity, Office of Finance, we will give you capacity if that is the difference between earning money and not. We don't want to find a bigger hole. But the importance of having this here, I would say, let's continue this till next Tuesday because we need to continue to get those reports. 160 that we put jobs up for but nobody needed to take, I think we also need our labor partners because in those conversations we had as well, to really encourage folks that those are positions to move towards. And we'll, we can go through those piece by piece as well with some of our labor partners and really help people move over to those other good jobs, doing good work, doing real work, where they're going to be better insulated and not subject to layoff. And then, you know, Mr. Parks hit it right on the head, too. We have to make sure that the savings that were expected from these transfers are occurring, that we're doing everything we can to make them happen quickly, but that they are occurring because if we don't bank that, folks, guess what? Our deficit balloons up a little bit more. But thank you for the work that you've done thus far. For city employees who are curious about this, they can contact Personnel Department, find out what positions are available. It might be a great time to find that new job inside the city family, even if you're not targeted for a layoff. This is an opportunity where you can keep some of your fellow coworkers working, you can keep services going, and save the city money and try a new career within the city. So, we really encourage city workers to do that. This is the time and that window is very narrow. So, with that, I'd ask to continue this till next Tuesday.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. If there's no objections, that item, we continue next Tuesday? That be the case? Next item?
Council has motions for posting and referral.
It should be posted and referred?
The excuse is on the desk. Councilmember Perry requests to be excused February 18th to arrive at 10:45 for city business and to leave at 1:30 for personnel, excuse me, personnel, business, and on February 24th to arrive at 11:00 a.m. for city business. That meets council policy.
Moved by Mr. Rosenthal, seconded by Mr. Garcetti.
Councilmember Garcetti requests to be excused Monday, February 22nd, to leave at 11:45, and Thursday, March 11th, to leave at 11:45. Those both meet council policy.
Moved by Mr. LeBonge, seconded by Mr. Kukarian.
Councilmember Corretts requests to be excused Wednesday, March 10th, to arrive at 11:00 a.m. That meets council policy.
Moved by Ms. Weezer, seconded by Ms. Allen.
And Councilmember Rosar requests to be excused Friday, February 26th, for city business. That meets council policy.
And moved by Ms. Perry, seconded by Mr. Parks.
And that clears the desk.
Okay. Any members have any public announcements?
Just colleagues, moving forward tomorrow, we had back-to-back days that were a little bit more abbreviated. Tomorrow, we're going to get the reports back. We had them as date-specific on a number of different partnership proposals that were put forward, including the Convention Center. We'll be here tomorrow and some other reports back on things like AB 1290, I believe, and a couple other. So, as we look at what we can put in next week to the emergency reserve, we're looking at an emergency reserve fund transfer next week, we're really scrubbing those numbers with the CLA. CLA will be consulting each one of you to talk about the projects that are in your districts from those special fund areas and to see what balances we truly have to be able to give back to our deficit for this year, possibly lend against other. But we'll also be looking at moving those forward. I know there was a number of committee hearings on those proposals, so we look forward to those discussions tomorrow. We're looking probably at a timeline of about two to three more weeks of these discussions before we have this year's budget deficit taken care of and some good steps moving forward as the mayor prepares his budget for the coming year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Any other public announcements? Seeing none, do we have any adjourning resolutions? Any adjourning motions? We have one, Mr. LeBonge. Thank you. Would all persons please rise for adjourning motions? Mr. LeBonge.
Members, I ask for adjourned memory of Nancy Munger, who died at her home, age of 86. She was the wife of businessman and philanthropist Charles Munger, whom raised her eight children. She was also graduate trustee at Marlboro School, trustee positioned at Stanford in her alma mater, as well as worked with the Huntington Library, the Los Angeles YMCA, and the Hoover Institute. She was a very wonderful person. I ask for adjourned in memory of Nancy Munger.
President, I've been in conversation with Charlie Munger, an amazing man who had around-the-clock help there for his wife as she was going through this passage, and I certainly want to second the motion. I got to tell you that the two of them were a dynamic duo of great note. Obviously, she'll be greatly missed.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenthal, Mr. LeBonge.
Adjourned in memory of Nina Blanchard, the famed Hollywood agent who was a graduate of Hollywood High School as well as Camino College and Columbia University. She was known as one of the best agents of all time. She survived by her two sisters, Victoria and Jackie, Nina Blanchard. Members, I also ask for adjourned in memory of Fred Chouse, the great coach of the Lakers in the Jerry West era. He came to be the head coach when the Dodgers moved here from Minneapolis in 1960. Thank you, the Lakers. I'm reading too fast. Fred was also the coach of Jerry West at Western, West Virginia University. And finally, I think we also should adjourn in memory of William Binder, who was owner of Felipe's. He was, his dad is the one who bought it from the original Felipe in 1927. He survived by his sons, Richard and John, who still run the wonderful restaurant, and also they have 10 grandchildren, 12 great-grandchildren. I used to see him just recently having lunch over at Felipe's, a wonderful family, a wonderful institution. And I'd ask Mr. Reyes join with me on this as well.
Thank you, Mr. LeBonge. Any others? Mr. Garcetti.
Just per Mr. Weston's instructions, I ask that we officially adjourn in memory of Shamet Bumpula as well. I don't think there's anything to add to the eloquence that he gave us, but I ask that we adjourn all members in her memory.
All members. Any other adjourning measures? Seeing none, ma'am. Please call the roll. Thank you very much. This concludes the meeting. The council next meet tomorrow at 10:00 a.m. in a special session on Thursday. Thank you.